This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call, but Ivan Nelson's not here, so we'll ask Judy Shavers to please.
Nice recovery.
Harris?
He did good.
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. The meeting is open for business. Tom McKenzie will lead our invocation today. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
High above in heaven, we thank you for this day, another beautiful day, a chance to live our lives in peace and serve our fellow man. We ask you to guide and direct these elected officials, and indeed, all those state, county, and national officials as they try to see to our needs and our freedoms, guide and direct them, watch over and protect our soldiers and wherever they serve, and be merciful to the mortal souls of those we have lost. All these things we ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on September 18th.
So moved.
Second, clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of September 14th through the 20th.
So moved.
Second, clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Proclamation, Mayor. Unfinished business, we have none today. This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 307 Springdale Road in District 2. State of Alabama and Kim L. Parker, doing business as a Parker Company, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harvison with the Building Department. We started this case in November of last year. There've been no improvements, there've been no permits taken out to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1404 Counselor Avenue in District 3. The State of Alabama, Virginia Barfield, and First Alabama Financial Services Incorporated being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in April of last year. There've been no improvement to the property, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at number 1 Mitchell Avenue in District 6. Kenneth L. Mackey in care of Brandy Klein Glass being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, I'm speaking on behalf of Ms. Brandy Klein Glass. We would speak in opposition to the resolution on the basis, and I'll give a little brief history of what's occurred. This property was originally owned by Mr. Mackey, who is referenced in your resolution.
Do you give your name and address, too?
I'm John Floyd, on behalf of Ms. Brandy Klein Glass.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
And in this particular situation, this property was originally owned by Mr. Mackey. It was subject to a lease sale agreement in favor of Mrs. Glass. During the course of the process, she paid all the necessary payments in regards to this piece of property, and we were forced to go into court in order to obtain title to the property. He refused to deliver the deed as required. When the process was ongoing, she was still not the titled owner. A tree standing next to the street, between the sidewalk and the street, which our position is was owned and to be maintained by the city of Gadsden, fell across the property and on top of the home, destroyed the home sitting on that piece of property, as well as her personal property therein. We made various claims and requests of the city to assist in removing the tree over a period of time. That was not done. There was a claim filed with the city that was investigated. It was ultimately denied, I believe, in April of this year, even though the claim was originally made in September of 2011, immediately after the damage. We're in a position where now we're having, since the claim has been denied, we're in the process of filing suit against the city claiming that they're responsible for the tree. Our position is that there had been numerous requests of the city to maintain the tree, which was in fact rotten, where limbs and other various things had fallen from the tree over a period of time leading up to the damage. So it would be our request that the resolution not be passed at this time and either be tabled or remain open until such time as we've resolved this matter through the Circuit Court.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes, sir.
That happens to be in my district in District 6. It's on the corner there, and that tree has been on that house forever, it seems like. I get calls and complaints every day about it, and there's kids out there playing in that yard, and it looks like to me that that is really unsafe for those kids that play in that yard because that house looks like to me, and I'm not an engineer or building inspector, it looks like to me that the house is basically fixing to fall on its own. Would you agree with me?
Yes, sir, I would agree. You know, the only issue that we had from the very beginning, and the tree fell on this piece of property in early September of 2011, and since that time, we've been through the process of trying to ask the city or request the city remove or assist in the removal of the tree. That's not been, you know, we've been told no. And the claim with the city was filed in September, immediately after that, when we couldn't get anything done, we filed a claim with the city. Well, I say, Ms. Glass filed a claim, and then I've been representing her since then. But yes, I would agree. I mean, I would agree that the property is not in a condition where anything can be done to salvage what is there, because the tree's been on that home for now a year. And the only question is, she doesn't, and never has had the ability to pay the cost of having the tree removed, and that's the reason we've been trying our best to have the city assist in doing so.
Do y'all have any assurance you can give this council that no one will get hurt on that property? Do y'all have any idea how you can secure the property, where people won't go on it?
I have no way to ensure the council of that.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Looks like we've got a legal situation here. We certainly refer to our attorney, but I'm sure it could be that the tree fell by act of God, so that's...
To be frank with you, I believe that's the position the city's taking at this point.
I'm not an attorney, I'm out of this.
Lee, can we abate this property while there's litigation going on?
Yes, sir, there's no reason we can't abate the property. That would not have any effect on whether lawsuits can be filed or not. It's kind of like if you have a car wreck in the middle of the street, you can go ahead and remove the car before lawsuit's filed.
But by what John said, I thought they had already filed suit.
No, they filed a claim.
Filed a claim, okay. That answered my question. We finna do what they want us to do, the city's finna assist them in moving, removing it.
Yes, so we're fixing to remove that tree and that building for you.
It's a matter of who pays for it, too.
Yes, sir. Ultimately, that is the way.
That's for us to pay for it, not him. I understand that, but we're in the system, though, I think.
But in that, in that house, it's been an ongoing process. I didn't know what the deal was, but it is a nuisance and is a hazard to the kids around there and the people around there, people that go on that property. It is a hazard. You would agree with it, correct?
Oh, and I believe Ms. Glass would agree, too. I mean, it's, you know, obviously, there's probably rodents and animals and other things living in that home.
Like Mr. Avery said, we're fixing to assist, y'all, I'm pretty sure.
It needs abated, it's just gonna be a discussion about who's paying for it.
Yes, sir, here we go.
I think when you see the pictures Mr. Harvison's probably has on his property, everybody up here should agree with him. Okay, thank you, Mr. Floyd, appreciate you.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to it? Anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in October of last year. There've been no improvements to the property, no permits to improve, and you can tell by the picture, this is not a case that would qualify for rehab. We're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance.
You sure about that?
Counsel, are you sure that that's not?
We're crunched, no, we're...
Okay.
I believe you might could say that, front corner there.
For those folks who, and again, this may go without saying, but for those folks who wonder what the big issue here is with this, it's not an issue, I don't think that the property owner even is making the case that this shouldn't be abated. I think what's at issue here is the expense and who that expense belongs to. They're exercising their rights relative to getting relief as it relates to that, as they should. So I don't know if there are any complications there, it's just gotta go through the appropriate legal process.
I got a question. John, were you talking to the city attorney? Were you talking to the city attorney?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor. We were, we negotiated with, obviously, the insurance company that takes care and handles the investigations of the claims that are made. And it was delayed for a period of time because there were other neighbors that had made reports of problems with that particular tree over the months leading up to the fall, and we had to put them in touch, put the insurance carrier in touch with those particular people, and they contacted them, and then ultimately, we received a letter saying they were denying the claim. So that's where we are at this point.
But I think they started with the city attorney.
Well, I was gonna say, I had no knowledge of that till now. Okay.
You started with the city attorney. The claim was filed through the clerk's office.
The claim was filed through the clerk. And then the next contact we had would have been from the adjuster.
Is the tree on the right away?
Yes, it was on the right away.
It was on the right away, fell across the sidewalk and the property on the house.
The tree actually uprooted, didn't it? The tree actually uprooted?
It did.
Okay.
Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance rezoning property located at 1357, 1405, and 1419 East Broad Street from District, from B1 Neighborhood Business District to B2 General Business District. Jerry Woods, Damian Stewart, and Orlando Glover have requested the rezoning for the purpose of operating a sports bar at 1419 East Broad Street in District 4. The Planning Commission voted five to one to recommend the council to deny the rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution, this ordinance? Is anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Good afternoon. My name is Lonnie Bagley. I live at 107 Pioneer Street. My property is adjacent to that property. I petition several neighbors that live in that area or people that visit that area that oppose to having a sports bar there. We feel that it wouldn't do anything to help the community, just bring more problem to our community. Also, if you look, that location where they want to open a bar is point three miles from an elementary school where kids walk past every day going to and from school. Like I said, I just do not think having a bar there would be a good idea, and I think in the past, there have been a bar there, Pioneer Bar, and from what I remember, it was probably just a lot of problems. But if you would like to see a petition, like I said, I have several names of people that live in my neighborhood or visit that neighborhood, attend church over that way that have signed petition, that they're against having a bar open there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Larue Watkins, and I oppose it for reasons similar. First of all, I think that, as I mentioned before, that a sports bar, any business, should not be located in a residential area. Now, I have no problem with folk enjoying themselves, drinking a little. It should be done in their own personal home, or they should go to a business area. And there are many reasons for that case. The fellow mentioned the school, he mentioned churches. Also, we, our area is already, it's not the best neighborhood in Gadsden, one of the best neighborhoods in Gadsden. And I just, I just thought about you people, the reason you, you're in office, is because you want to make things better for neighborhoods. And in no way, this make a neighborhood better. First of all, it would be drinking, and some people know how to hold their booze, good. But there are people who just don't know how to do that. And we got young girls, young boys. Our neighborhood is filled with young kids, and that's not a good example for them. But not only that, what if some of these individuals come out of their sports bar, feeling a little good, and they may see a young, beautiful young lady walking up the street or down the street? Or I even got a wife, and some in the neighborhood have wives. Who's not gonna say that they won't approach? A wife is one of those young ladies. So, and there are so many reasons. You know, in a business area, when someone, is a bar there, you don't have a lot of walking in those areas. But as you mentioned, we got a school, we got churches, and as I mentioned, we got so many young boys, and they're out playing on a regular. Someone might come out drinking and get in their vehicles, and then that injure one of these young kids, or anyone. So, and there are so many other reasons why. But to me, it's just a no-brainer that a sports bar got any business in a residential neighborhood. And I mentioned that the other meeting. I encourage you guys to do this, if you will, put that sports bar in your neighborhood, regardless of whether you got a nice neighborhood or fairly down neighborhood, put it next to your home. And I encourage y'all to think about that. But in no way, we need any kind of business in our neighborhoods, because we got a couple, and we see the results of those businesses in our neighborhoods. And one more thing I mentioned when it comes to that sports bar, a sports bar come in there, we might have prostitution, that might bring further prostitution in our neighborhoods, because those people are looking for someone who's a little bit intoxicated to sell themselves to. So, and again, as the gentleman mentioned, our young girls, our young boys are coming from school, and they're playing in the neighborhood, and they'll see all kinds of things such as that. And we don't need that. I got a 16-year-old son, and he's a pretty fine young fellow, I would say, and I do not need him to see any, anything that associated with that. And I do have a petition as well, few names on it, who am I gonna give this to? And I got those off my street. I live on 108 Pinehurst Street, and most, nearly 99% of my neighbors oppose that, they signed that. So, thank you.
Larue. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Hi, my name is Orlando Glover. I'm gonna be co-owner of the sports bar and grill also. I don't know why the grill bar wasn't added.
Give your address, please.
I speak in favor of...
Address.
Oh, my name is Orlando Glover again, and I'm in favor of opening up...
No, no, your address.
1419 East Broad Street.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Where do you live?
I live on 104 North A Street, also is in the East Gadsden community.
That's what you want.
Yes, sir. I'm in favor of opening up the bar and grill, not really for the fact of alcohol. East Gadsden is kind of a dying community. For the mature adults on the east side of the community, there's nowhere to go, nothing to do. I'm just in favor of trying to bring something to the neighborhood where a mature adult can come and maybe watch a ballgame, sit down, maybe eat wings, maybe shoot pool, or just have a place to come mainly and watch ballgames and eat. There's a lot of empty buildings in East Gadsden. That is actually one of the buildings. It's a predominantly business neighborhood, as I see on a daily basis. There are more businesses on the outskirts, on the east broad part of the east side there. So I'm just wanting to maybe create a job for someone. I'm also wanting to create an environment for some mature adults to come and sit around and have some recreation for. I also have signatures from those same neighbors that he might have signatures from, saying that they're in favor of me opening up that sports bar. And actually, I also have 99% of Pinehurst on that list as well. And thank you for your time, and I hope you consider my proposal.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it?
Yes, sir. My name is Damian Stewart. I'm from East Gadsden. I'm speaking for 1419 East Broad Street. I live at 1109 acre circle, sir. I grew up in East Gadsden, my parents were from East Gadsden. Matter of fact, my mother grew up on East Broad, right across the street from Bishop, in a little two-bedroom home. My father grew up on Keelan Road. So basically, I'm a, what you say, a product of East Gadsden. I've seen East Gadsden at its best, I've seen it at its worst. And for me, you know, it's just trying to bring something back to the community, because it was said in the, in the Planning Commission that, you know, we don't know what East Gadsden is because we're not from East Gadsden. Well, I'm from East Gadsden. I lived in East Gadsden all my life until last year, pretty much 37 years, sir. I don't hold any, you know, animosity towards the gentleman that questioned our work ethic when he said he worked 12-hour shifts, you know. I work 14-hour shifts, I work for URS. I've held a steady job since I was 15. So for anyone to question what we're trying to do, saying it's greed or selfishness, it's not that, it's just trying to bring something back to the community. Me personally, I can't speak for everybody. All I know is what my intentions are, and I would really appreciate if you give me the opportunity to fulfill my dreams of becoming the business owner in a community that I grew up in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Like to speak in favor? The ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, I'd ask at this time that we suspend the rules and vote on this today, so I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Make a motion, we pass.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I'll wait. I've got some discussion, but I'll wait.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the...
Roll call, please.
All those in favor to adopt the ordinance, Harris?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Eccles?
I would normally vote against it since the committee voted five to one, but I see a lot of pros and cons, and I've been out of town for two weeks. I hadn't had an opportunity to really look at this and make a definite decision on it, so I'm gonna abstain from voting on it.
Stewart?
I serve on the Planning Commission, so I'm gonna abstain also.
Cannon?
Yes.
And Reed?
You know, I'd, the discussion, what in the world am I gonna do to discuss them after I vote on it? If I'm gonna vote on it, I won't discuss it beforehand, because I've heard yeses and nos, and I don't want a sports bar near my house. I really don't. I agree with those guys, I agree with what y'all are trying to do to build up in the community, but I got a feeling that I don't really go along with putting a sports bar next to all those residential houses. Some of them, no.
Motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, can I discuss now? That's okay.
I'm gonna really be interested in this discussion.
I think you just want to make a comment, brother.
Well, a comment, yeah, I just think, yeah, let me just make a comment. You know, I understand both sides of this issue, but we as elected officials have to look past emotional issues, and sometimes, these things are emotional. That particular piece of property is located in a business district. It just so happened that the property right next behind it is residential. So what do you do? You kill all your businesses that are located close to residential areas, you kill your city, you kill your revenue sources. And I'm gonna challenge the gentlemen, because I always challenge these ministers who come up here and complain to us about passing resolutions when people can get alcoholic beverages close to their church or close to their community. Well, the same thing can happen if the guy goes over on Tuscaloosa Avenue to a bar, he can be driving back, if he live in East Gadsden, run over your kid, or see your wife, or see your children out there, and stop and say something to them. We need to be consistent if we're opposed to alcohol. I don't drink, so it doesn't matter with me. But I challenge you guys to start a petition, because none of the preachers have. If you start a petition and bring it back and say, "We want a referendum on alcohol beverages, and we want to pass one to stop it from being sold legally," I'll be the first person to sign it. So I challenge you to bring that thing back. But you won't do it, because your emotional concern is what's close to your house, it's not what's close to my house or somebody else's house. And as long as this is the law, like I said, I don't drink, but as long as it's the law, I'm up here to uphold the law as opposed to my personal beliefs. Personally, I hope they don't never sell another drop of alcohol. It wouldn't bother me at all, but that's my personal belief. And until we get the law changed, and I'm willing to sign the petition if you'll bring it back, then I have to support those type of issues.
Mr. President, I also have a comment I'd like to make, and I promised upstairs that after the vote was taken, that I would not make any comments, but I see, I see it necessary for me to make a short comment. The establishment itself, and I have to apologize, the establishment itself will be actually located in District 4, not in District 1. And I find myself personally, and this is my personal opinion, being against having a sports bar in the area. But I can't let my personal opinion override a decision that's best for the area and for the best for the community and the best thing for the city of Gadsden. Our district and our area in East Gadsden is not the worst district, is not the worst place in the world, as it may have been sort of insinuated. We have, we have good people, we have a good community, we have good neighbors, and we're proud. Yes, there are things that need to be done in East Gadsden, just like there are in every district and every area in the city. We need more, we need improved police protection, we need, we need more citizens' actions, we need everything, just like everybody else has, but I can't... But I can't stand in the way of progress when we're talking about a business district already, it's already a business district, we're changing it from B1 to B2, to accommodate other businesses that might wanna come into that very, very vibrant area of East Broad. Now, those areas that we have, when we talk about the other issues that we have in East Gaston, the prostitution and everything else, you know, I live there, you know, and I drive up and down East Broad and Pinehurst and all those other areas every day, sometimes two and three times a day, and I see what's going on, the prostitution is there, so this sports bar won't bring prostitution to East Broad. Hopefully, it'll help eliminate some of it. The issue that we have, and we voted on it, and it's there, now I challenge you to make the best of whatever situation that we're gonna have when things happen in East Gaston.
Okay. Since I was the only no vote, I'm gonna say that my people sent me up here to vote my opinion, and that's exactly what I did.
And that's what you did.
You did. You voted their opinion?
I voted their opinion. Now, but they voted for me to vote their opinion, so obviously, it was them when I voted.
You did good.
You did.
Thank you, Robert.
I think when you talk about East Gaston, which is part of my district, of course, there's been more money spent in East Gaston than any other districts in the whole Alabama City. We've been able to put a new health department, a new DHR building, we got a new Walmart. We didn't spend it, but there've been millions of dollars spent in East Gaston, and it is a fine place, and a lot of good people in East Gaston, yes, and like in every, you've got some bad people in every district probably. But anyway, I'd like, I just wanted to put that in. East Gaston's fine.
You did. It's a great place.
Okay. Did we vote on this?
We did.
I thought we did.
We did.
You didn't have anything to say?
I'm gonna vote on it. We have a saying.
Okay, this is a time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or favor of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2013 budgets. The ordinance approves the following budget. General budget, forty-six thousand, million, seven hundred, no, I gotta start all over again.
That's okay. Take your time.
Forty-six million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand. That's more money than I know anything about. Special revenue fund, seven thousand, nine hundred and eight, five twenty-eight, that's seven million. Debt service, six million, nine eighty-nine, one eleven. Enterprise and internal services funds, eleven million, six ten, three, six thirty-five. Capital projects fund, seven million, one hundred and one thousand. The general purpose, the purpose proposed general fund budget provides for all entitled full employees that should receive a two-step increase, which is 2.5 percent, and all the entitled full-time employees who have a base salary under twenty-six thousand should receive an additional 1 percent increase of 1.25 percent. The raises will be effective as of the first pay period beginning in fiscal year 13, which is October.
October.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? The ordinance was presented today for the first reading, the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd ask for suspension of the rules so we can vote on this.
Second.
Clerk, could you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, okay, go ahead.
I'd just like to commend the mayor and his staff, the hard work they put in on this. I think it's a real good budget, and I know they spent many, many hours working on it, and a balanced budget, that's great.
Mr. President, we did have, the Finance Committee did have a public hearing, a meeting on last week on the budget. Departments were there, and different groups were there. Just wanted to give a few highlights, and of course, people need to understand that this is a working budget, it's not set in stone. As a matter of fact, it might be changed for today as of when, I don't know, but you never can tell, somebody bring up a resolution. But let me just give some highlights as to what the budget do have. You talked about the raise, and that was kinda confusing, but we did have a two-step pay raise across the board, which cost the city five hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And you talked about employees who make less than twenty-six thousand. We gave them a one-step more raise, instead of giving them two, it was a three-step. And the reason for that is because of cost of insurance and some other things that we made adjustments in the budget. Heretofore, employees paid a certain amount for their insurance coverage. In this particular budget now, it goes to a percentage. The city will pay 80 percent of whatever the cost is, and employee will pay 20 percent of what the cost is. So that's why we made this adjustment for the people on the lower incomes of our employees to make sure that this pay raise won't be wiped out by the increase in their insurance costs. And in the future, this council will not have to deal with insurance costs. If the insurance goes up in the future, it's automatic. Employee pays 20, city pays 80. But at the same token, if the insurance comes down, it's the same thing. We pay 80, they pay 20. So it takes the political stuff out of it, and Mr. Echols and I probably have disagreed on this for years and years, 'cause every time a raise came up on insurance and benefits, I supported it. As a matter of fact, I think we've only done one since 91, 92? 91. We did one pass on. And Mr. Echols always said, you know, "It's gonna come back to bite you, it's gonna come." Well, it did, and he finally convinced me that it did. You know, we've gotta draw the line, because, you know, I supported the employees, I still support the employees, but also have some, almost 40,000 citizens we need to support too. And if we don't do something and make these adjustments, we're gonna be like Jefferson County most people know about. But I think every week, we get a report from the National League of Cities where there's communities and cities and towns that are going bankrupt because of the benefit package, and they didn't make those adjustments in time to save their city. And it's a real hard choice to do this, but it had to be done. So I know a lot of employees are not happy, but again, just be mindful that this is a working budget, and who knows, if Echols take all that money out of his satchel, that a man used to say he had, we might be able to come back and pay all the benefits and everything else. But anyway, I just want people to understand that, you know, we're working, we're still working.
If I had all the money that Robert thinks I have, I'd be happy to pay his city out of debt.
Well, I'm just, I don't know, most of you guys don't know Carl Harland, but Carl Harland used to come in and say, "Bob, Echols got all that money in his satchel over there for the city of Gaston, so if you take it out, Bob, we need it."
I'd like to say a word, too.
I'd like to say something, too.
Oh, go ahead.
Excuse me.
Robert didn't say that those cities have gone bankrupt, that their employees lost their retirement. If the city goes bankrupt, they take everything, including the retirement money and everything. So we don't want that to happen. We're for the employees up until the fact that it's not politically, I mean, physically responsible. I am. But when it comes that we're paying 70 percent of the total amount of money that comes in for employee salaries and benefits, as to me, has long been unacceptable, and I've tried for years. In fact, we went to court in 1991 and got it passed, and the judge said we were being fair. If we had stuck to this, we wouldn't be doing this today.
Well, I thought you.
But we did.
I thought you. You're right.
Not the only one, neither.
I know, I know.
Anyway, I'm gonna vote for this budget because it's the first time I feel like this council in the 20-something years I've been on here has been physically responsible. It's still way short of what it should be, but it's the best I'm gonna get. And I want to say thank you before the vote even comes, 'cause I feel sure it's gonna pass, that we keep trying and keep the city, like Robert says, we don't wanna go broke, we don't wanna go bankrupt, and we're in good shape right now. Mayor, you want to say something?
Yes, I would say, and I spoke the other night at the Finance Committee meeting about this, our insurance rates are still lower than any of the county, the Boards of Education, a lot of different entities around, especially when you get in some other cities, we're still gonna be lower than most all of those. We have given six raises in seven budgets, and out there, there's very many cities in the state that has given six raises, and like they said, we'd only gone up on insurance once in 21 years. But you know, it's not only local, it's a national thing. You see police departments being cut out, you see services being done, you see in one city that everybody's making $7.50 an hour. And like they said, if you go bankrupt, there's nothing for anybody, and we're gonna protect the employees as best we can, and we're gonna also take care of the citizens and all the services if we can. So, thank you.
Mr. President, I just had a couple of quick comments. You know, I'm not gonna rehash what's been said about the budget. These are some tough decisions, and I think we've been fiscally responsible in the decisions that we've made, but I do want those who have individualized issues that they've presented this council and the mayor with to be sure not to pit fiscal responsibility or fiscal prudence against personal scenarios, because I think everyone understands if you're close to these budgetary items, you know that a lot of times fiscal responsibility means that you have to tighten your belt in areas that may impact some people negatively. Does it mean, I think we've demonstrated that we're not gonna catch all of those scenarios initially, and when those issues are presented to us, we'll look at them and review them, and we have to be firm in saying, yes, we can address it, or no, we can't. I think, again, there was a group of folks that we addressed some time ago, as relates to them being a gap in this process. There is a group that's before us now, and we are likewise reviewing that group. So again, we are demonstrating, as we're demonstrating the fiscal prudence and responsibility, we're also exercising a measure of compassion as well. So just please be mindful of that. I don't necessarily expect credit for that, but that is something that we're gonna do, and we've demonstrated it in the past, and I think we'll do that going forward.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
All those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, 14 is a resolution creating and eliminating jobs, classifications, and amending resolution R. 43-4 and R. 463-4. This makes the following changes to city job classification. Adds the classifications of garbage, billing, and collection supervisor, and landscape manager. Deletes the position of clerk Pippis, computer operator, and city gardener. Changes the pay raise for the purchasing agent. Changes the job title for the museum director. I don't think that's gonna happen. Requires a curator to report directly to the library. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Make a motion.
Mr. President.
I'm gonna amend it, but go ahead. I make a motion, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to, go ahead. At this time, I'd like to make amendment to it, since we got it on the floor now. Okay. I wanted to wait and get it on the floor before I made my amendment, 'cause you gotta vote on the amendment and the resolution. I'd like to change Section 4 of this resolution, where it says the museum director will be changed to the museum curator, and the job classification would be 327. I'd like to change that and say the museum director will stay as the museum director, and the job classification will be 327. However, the next line, the museum director, instead of curator, will still report to the director of the library. I put that in the form of a motion.
You got a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay. I think we should vote on the amendment first. We have a motion to amend the resolution to say that the museum director shall report to the library director. And who is the second on that?
Mr. Councilman Williams.
Where's the discussion?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the amendment is approved. We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution as amended.
Right. Now that the amendment has passed, I'll just discuss, basically, what was happening was the, there was some language change from museum director to museum curator. We struck that out and left the museum director as a museum director, but at the same time, we left in the fact that the museum director will still report to the library director. So that's basically the change in this ordinance. Job classification stays the same, pay stays the same, nothing changed.
I got some discussion on that. First of all, there are those in the community, I won't call any names, I know who they are, saying the museum is gonna close. The museum is not closing. It's never even been considered to be closed. The mayor and the council, we've been very supportive of the museum. When I was on the community development board for about eight years, we put thousands of dollars in the museum, and the library, and the cultural arts building. Since I've been in the mayor's office, we've put thousands of dollars in the museum, the upstairs part. We did all that in-house, we wanna expand it, we're not trying to close it at all. We do plan to keep it like it is. Steve will be the director. Nobody's running anybody off, nobody's going anywhere. For administrating purposes, bookkeeping, financial hours worked, and that type of thing, that's what will be handled through the library director. Otherwise, everything will still be the same. Okay?
Call. Another discussion? Another discussion? Call for a question?
Maybe you should, they're still asking why.
Well, I mean.
The mayor said because of administering procedures, so talk to the mayor privately after this. He can tell you exactly why this is being done. There is a reason, there's definitely a reason for this.
I think they need to talk to whoever they wanna talk to afterwards. Let's proceed with the vote at this time.
Very well.
I call for a question.
So call for the question. All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I would like to make this comment, I probably should wait a little later, but thank the people who volunteered for the museum. We appreciate what you do, believe us, we do. We thank you for what you're doing. Couldn't operate without you. Thank you.
Without them, it wouldn't be the volunteers.
Wouldn't be what it is.
Yeah, I said, without them, it wouldn't be there. I mean, the volunteers are the lifeblood of it.
And Steve's done a great job with what he's done there as far as the museum itself is concerned.
Yes.
We appreciate what he's done also.
Next.
Where are we? We took the vote.
I'll tell you.
Yes, you took.
I'll talk to you. I'll talk to you.
Okay. 15 is a resolution authorizing supplemental agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation. This is for sidewalks, crosswalks, signage, pedestrian signal, striping, a bike rack, and educational materials, project improvements at. project improvements at Yer Brown Elementary School. This is 100% funded through the Safe Routes to School program in the amount of $60,602. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Sixteen is a resolution authorizing agreement with S and M E. This is for environmental services associated with a required explosive gas remediation plan at the city's C and D landfill transfer station to be submitted to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management due to elevated methane gas readings. The amount is not to exceed $3,500. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Seventeen is a resolution authorizing change to amend to agreement with Sane Associates Incorporated and the city on behalf of the Gadsden and Edwell Metropolitan Planning Organization regarding the bicycle and pedestrian plan project. This extends the completion date to March 2013 without a budget increase. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
First reading of the ordinance revising employee share of insurance costs. This repeals ordinance 05907 and establishes the employee cost of medical and dental insurance to be 20% of the premium cost for single and family coverages. This ordinance will, was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, I have no objection, I ask for unanimous consent to consider today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Permission is granted.
Ask for a passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, we, we need to do all of this to make sure our budget is in line and everything is ready to start October 1, which is next week. So that's one of the reasons why we're suspending the rules to act on the budget today. So, because I physically, your start's on Monday, this coming Monday.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have one. I have a resolution 345, a resolution authorizing representatives of law enforcement officers and their families to conduct roadblocks. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Permission is granted.
Yeah, I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is the monuments, Mr. President, that's remembering the fallen police officers in Edwell County and Gadsden and the surrounding cities. They will be having three roadblocks on October 13th. And I think it's important that we have this.
And the monument has been moved?
It has been moved to the courthouse.
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is carried.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple items to ask for consideration today. The first of which is a resolution authorizing agreement with B. Craig Lipscomb for architectural services for the renovation of Weaver School. I ask that we, or, I'm sorry, the Weaver School building. I ask that we consider that today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Permission is granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is essentially the city setting aside monies for renovation of the Weaver School building. The plan is to convert this for usage by municipal court and as a police precinct, or city court and a police precinct. So this is definitely, I think, a good move. That location happens to actually be in District Two. So, again, that's something that we're, we're looking forward to and excited about. The timeline hasn't been established yet, but the mayor's pressing forward with the use of both outside and internal resources to get that done.
And that's in East Gadsden.
East Gadsden, that is in East Gadsden, absolutely.
You want to say something?
Yeah. One, one reason is we have about 10,000 come through city court every year, two days a week, and this is just not a good situation for people coming in, paying bills, getting licensed, need to see people with business appointments or whatever. So we need more things on that side of East Gadsden, so we're moving court over there. We will have a desk sergeant during the day, we'll have security like we do out front, and we're moving an extra patrol person, so we'll have three on patrol in East Gadsden, three cars instead of two, on the day and night shift. So that's, that's why we do this, gonna be a win-win for everybody.
Thanks.
Any others? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is carried.
Any others?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I have one other item. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with Barry Jones Wilson LLC. I ask that we consider this today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Permission is granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, this is relative to some historic discussion that we've had about the Nugent Building. So this is for a structural scope, for the demolition of the Nugent Building.
Any other discussion?
We're always thrilled to death to see that eyesore come down, so.
Yes.
It's gonna happen this fall.
Any other?
You promise?
I hope so.
There's always hope.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is carried.
Any other? Citizens' request. Lisa Ross, who wants to, Finance Director, wants to make a few comments.
I know it's been a long meeting, and I know y'all are hungry, but y'all give me your attention, please. I'm actually gonna read this because I don't wanna miss what I want to say, because this truly comes from my heart. So I'm gonna read it. Mayor and council. I recently read an article in the St. Clair paper entitled "Government Spacing Tough Decisions This Time of Year." It read as follows. Tough economic times have precipitated cutbacks at every level. The pain is felt primarily at the local level, where salaries have shrunk, benefits have decreased, and personnel is thinner by the day. Believe it or not, these are the reasons we elected our leaders to take these offices. Leaders take their jobs to make hard decisions. None of these decisions should be made lightly. Wrong decisions make, might have adverse effects on the city's future for years to come. For the past nine years, it has been my privilege and honor to be the Finance Director for the city of Gadsden. Along with this privilege and honor comes a great responsibility that I do not hold lightly. It has been my responsibility to make sure that this council and administration has all the financial information that is relevant to the city of Gadsden. That is why I give you detailed monthly financial statements showing general fund revenues and expenditures. In 2009, the Government Accounting Board passed Gatsby 45, requiring us to book our OPEB, Other Post Employment Benefits, on our balance sheet. This is a requirement that had been mandated for many years in the private sector. After our actuarial study was completed, we were shocked by $103 million liability that has currently risen to $110 million. Like many other cities, we were faced with an unfunded liability that we knew was a reality for the future. Tough economic times of 2010 and 2011 hit across our nation, our states, and our cities, and we too felt the impact. Our sales tax, as well as other taxes, dropped shortly, and we found ourselves clinging to our reserves or unassigned funds just to make ends meet. We begin to see municipal governments across our nations file for bankruptcies, including the largest one being right here in the state of Alabama, Jefferson County. Reality was happening, and we knew that it was time to make those hard decisions. In the past two years, this council and administration have made those hard decisions. First, in 2011, you passed a resolution to increase employment contributions to RSA by 2.5%. I realize it was not the political thing, correct thing to do, but today, all state employees, all teachers, and now 50 other agencies come under the provisions of Act 2011/676, and many other will come on board effective October 2012. Then, this year in 2012, you first passed a resolution to remove all current retirees from our LJF and place them on a supplement Medicare policy. Then, two weeks ago, you passed a resolution to increase healthcare premiums for all future retirees that retire after January 1, 2013. By willing to make those hard decisions, you have no doubt positively impacted our unfunded liability and secure a future for this city financially. I stand here today, not only as the Finance Director of the city of Gadsden, but also as an employee, to say thank you for securing a future for the citizens of this city and for myself. As the Finance Director, I often get blamed for things that happen, even though I do not have a vote. This last week, as the Finance Committee meeting was taking place here at City Hall, my car, my car was vandalized, and not for the first time. I am an employee like everyone else. When retirement went up, I paid the 2.5% increase. And when I retire, if I choose to cover my family, I know that I will have to pay by the new ordinance, the amount of $716.50 for my premium. But that is okay, because I am thankful that you have secured a future pension for me, unlike so many other cities where their employees are being left with nothing. So even though I realize that I won't get a standing ovation today, my Bible says, "Lay not up for yourself treasures here on earth, but lay up for yourself eternal treasures in heaven." I realize that I have to be accountable for you as the Finance Director, but most of all, I one day will be accountable to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Now, as we look to the future, may we be, continue to be united in our efforts so that we may secure a future for the many durations to come. I would like to thank you, gentlemen, for the excellent job that you do to the citizens of the city of Gadsden, and thank you for passing my budget today.
I may be the only one to give her a standing ovation.
Okay, let's see. Citizens, let's see. The march by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start? Billy?
Yes. I, I wasn't here last Tuesday for council meeting.
Oh, no.
So you all had a very short meeting, and the reason I was told by a very good and dear constituent of mine's relatives was that the reason y'all had such a short meeting was because I wasn't there. Now, I'm here today, I've made one statement, and it's 10 after 12. Now, who's responsible for that? Okay. Stroud Avenue project is going, is moving along. And Chad, I'm hoping that we'll get our sign out there and our picture, you know, taken in a little publicity, you know, from the Gadsden town, that the combined project from the city of Gadsden and Edwell County is moving forward on Broad, on Stroud Avenue for the, for the help in the situation, the drainage situation that we have over there. Stage one, so it's moving forward, and I thank you. The safe school routes, our safe routes to school. We see that Yer Brown is having something done, but my understanding is that that's, that's an ongoing project, and all of our schools in this, within the city limits are being looked at for, for safety reasons, am I right, Chad?
The grants were turned in by the school board, by the city school board, and all of them turned in. Right now, we have three approved, and that's Yer Brown, Striplin, and Donahue. Until those projects are closed out, they have been told they cannot apply for another.
Thank you. Thank you, that's, so that's good news for Donahue and Striplin. You will get some improvements on those schools also, as far as safe routes for our kids. The, and you know, I, 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 I won't, I'm not gonna comment on the East Gadsden thing. I think we've said enough about that. We won't stymie, we won't stymie progress, but at the same time, we will be very diligent in our responsibilities to make sure that that area is given the attention that it needs to be given by our city fathers and our police department. That, that I, I promise you and I commit to you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President, just a couple things. My, the District Two Community Meeting will be held this Thursday, scheduled for this Thursday at Thompson Community Center at 6:30 PM. And so that's, that's September the 27th, so it'll be Thursday at 6:30 at Thompson. The history has been that I think the, the folks at East Gadsden generally make the East Gadsden Community Center meetings, and the folks in North Gadsden make the Thompson meetings. So, but, but please understand that you have the, you do have the luxury, if you choose to exercise it, to, to, to cross the bridge and make the other meeting if you choose to. They're out there for the entire district. We always have very good turnout, very good, very good conversation at those meetings. So again, that's Thursday, Thompson Community Center at 6:30. Received a couple calls, and I think it's been the case with all the council members, we've been getting, you know, constant flow of calls as relates to demolition and grass cutting. And I think we've talked about grass cutting a lot, so I'm not gonna, you know, continue to beat that dead horse. But, but I will say that there, there, there is a great deal of activity from both public works and community development as it relates to that. We're just not able to keep up with either the volume or the perfect conditions for grass cutting. So please be mindful, don't, don't stop calling. If you've got a, an issue, make sure you make us aware of that. But, you know, again, understand that the resources are slim as relates to that. And I think they're even slimmer as relates to demolitions. I, I know in my district, I've got one area where there are roughly 30, 30 homes scheduled for demolition. And, and I think we just added a, added one to the list today. So, so again, just be mindful of that. The last thing, and again, I won't belabor the point, but we often get called to address the issue of economic development in the city. I get questions on a regular basis about the riverfront and, and recruiting industry and things of that nature. That, that's why those discussions and the answers to those questions are why passing a sound budget is important. When you carry a $105 million, $106, I may be shorting it, million-dollar debt that has to reflect. When you have to leverage debt to draw businesses here, it becomes very difficult. So what we're after as a city is, is creating an opportunity to where we're healthy enough from a financial standpoint to draw those businesses. And I'm, you know, I'm gonna continue to say that, because I think that's something that we as citizens should be educated on. I've only been up here two years, but I've been in my district for roughly 20 years. And these are the kind of things that I wanted my council to address for me, and that's why I'm sitting here today, is because I felt the need to understand and better serve as relates to that. So, you know, please take those things into consideration, and again, just understand and know that we haven't forgotten those people who have personalized issues as it relates to our budget. We'll, we'll address those where we can. Thank you.
I really wasn't gonna have any comments, but I, I need to talk very quickly. I was reminded, Mr. Echoes and to the clerk's office, we talk about being seen on Channel 99, we also rebroadcast on WMDJ, so I think we need to start making that announcement along with, with the announcement about Comcast. And the other thing, Lisa bought up, I think that was very, very childish, and whatever you, word you wanna use for whoever to do something to her car last week. I didn't get a chance to address that last week, but, I mean, come on now. I thought we were all adults, and no matter what your opposition to what's going on here, I, I find it very childish to, to do something like that, to her personal automobile. If you have problems with If you have problems with her, see her face to face and tell her what your problem is. If you ain't man or lady enough to do that, then stay at home or something. But at any rate, I think that was very childish, and hopefully, we can find out, somebody, I'll put up a dollar for a reward, I got a few dollars in my pocket, if somebody come and tell us who did it, we'll give it to them. That's all I have.
I'd just like to say again how much we appreciate what Steve has done with the museum and all the volunteers and what y'all do. We do appreciate that. I think we have one of the finest museums in the state, and it's because of Steve and the volunteers that work down there. I just would ask you, beg you, please don't jump to any conclusions about what's going on, get all the facts together, and I think you'll see where the administration's coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everyone that came out to music on me in this whole year. Last Saturday was our last one for the year, we'll start back in April. I appreciate everybody that volunteered, that came out to cook food, that sung, I really appreciate all those folks. We're turning our thoughts now to October the twenty-fifth, from five to seven. We'll close Wall Street off, and we'll have treats for the kids. All the merchants down there will be out putting out candy, we'll have some inflatables down there, roads will be closed off, the police will be down there, it'll be a real safe environment. This has been going on, treats on Wall Street for at least the past thirty, thirty-five years, will be October the twenty-fifth, that'll be on Thursday night from five to seven. That's all I got.
Yeah, I think I said everything I wanted to say last week about the museum. My main focal point was preserve everything in that museum and not let it get away. I know that Steve and Elaine County and the volunteers have built that museum, and they built it from the ground floor, because I was there when Bob King was in charge. Okay? And I know what it's been from that day up to today. And all I can say is, without the volunteers, and without Elaine, and without Steve at this point, then we would be in trouble. So I ask for your cooperation and continue the work that y'all are doing down there, because that's the only way I know for y'all to watch over what's in that museum. Because if y'all leave, it'll all get gone. Done that.
Amen. An entertaining motion, we adjourn.
Some move.